And welcome to the West Bend Common Council Veterans Tribute. I would like to ask everybody to please rise for the posting of the colors. Colors. Thank you to the West Bend Police Department for the posting of colors this evening. Next, we're going to have a tribute to each branch of the military. I would ask those who have served or are currently serving, please rise if you can as your song is presented. First of all, I forgot I'd like to thank Veronica Haverstetter for singing the National Anthem tonight. Beautiful job. I have a proclamation that I'd like to read. Whereas the city of West Bend is extremely proud of our veterans who have served in all wars of the United States, fought for freedom, continued the traditions and institutions which have made this nation great. And whereas their service has been selfless, their accomplishments have been outstanding. Our veterans have served with courage and distinction in the face of tremendous adversary adversity, demonstrating unfaltering devotion to our nation. And whereas, with respect for and in recognition of the contributions our service members have made to the cause of peace and freedom around the world, we express our deepest appreciation. Now, therefore, I, Steve Hoekser, council president of the city of West Bend, hereby declare Monday, the 11th of November, 2019, as Veterans Appreciation Day in the city of West Bend. And I ask all citizens to respect and honor all of our veterans of every war and peacetime. In addition, the public is invited to participate in the Veterans Day service at the Washington County Historical Society Memorial Area on the corner of Fifth and Poplar on Monday, November 11th, 2019, at 10:45 a.m. Next, I'd like to introduce Reverend Clarissa Martinelli. A little bit on Reverend Martinelli, she was born in Bainbridge, Georgia, the only daughter of Reverend Willie and sister Emma Griffin. She has two brothers, Eric and Anthony. After a stellar enlisted and officer career in the United States Navy, Reverend Martinelli retired with the rank of lieutenant. She accepted her call to ministry and was ordained as an Internet Elder at the 131st Session of the Chicago Annual Conference, becoming the fourth generation of ordained clergy. Reverend Martinelli's educational background include Bachelor of Science in Health and Sciences at California State University, Hayward, Masters of Science and Public Health at Trident University, Masters of Divinity at Garrett Evangelical Theological Seminary. She is the humble pastor and servant leader of the Fifth Avenue United Massible Church right here in West Bend, Wisconsin. Pastor Clarissa is married to Mr. Martin J. Martinelli, a United States Navy retired veteran. They are Gold Star parents of Interior Commission Specialist, Third Class Marissa Martinelli, daughters Bianca and Sophia, and a son, Lieutenant Junior Grade Nicholas Martinelli of the USS Vella Gulf. With that, I introduce Pastor Martinelli.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you. I thank my God every time I remember you, Philippians 1:3. On 11 November, 1918, at 11:00 a.m., the Armistice took effect to end the War of All Wars, a day of great celebration and rejoicing. Veterans Day, or Armistice Day, reminds us that men and women who serve and serve in our military secure the freedoms we enjoy. Their sacrifices give us the opportunity to enjoy liberty, which stands as a beacon of light to other nations. We owe a great debt of gratitude to these men and women for their faithful service and their commitment to God and country, as described in 1 John 3:16. This is how we have discovered love's reality. Jesus sacrifices life for us. Because of this great love, we should be willing to lay down our lives for one another. In remembering the service and courage of those who went before us, we honor the veterans of our military and their stewardship of our liberty in leaving us a legacy before handing it off to the next generation. Ephesians 2:20 reminds me that those who have gone before us built on the foundation of the apostles and prophets with Christ Jesus Himself as the chief cornerstone. Those veterans continue to challenge us all today, not to build on something new or of our own, but to be worthy of what was built by others. My prayer is that as we reflect on Veterans Day, let us sincerely thank our living veterans. Remember our fallen soldiers and loved ones who have gone ahead to their heavenly reward and be filled with solemn pride in the heroism of those who died in their country's service and with gratitude for the victories we have shared as a nation and continue to build on the foundation left for us. Please join me in prayer. O eternal God, our shepherd, with you we shall not want. With you we shall lie down and bring pastures and rest beside Still Waters. Though we walk through the valley of the shadow of death, with you we shall fear no evil; for you are with us. Your rod and your staff comfort us. Heavenly God, we give you thanks today for our nation's veterans. We honor them for their faithful service to our country and what they have done to defend and preserve our freedom. Generation after generation, young men and women have answered our country's call and as a result, their lives have been changed forever. We are grateful to all who have served, whether in peacetime or in periods of conflict. But today, we especially remember those who have tempered by fire, those who continue to bear wounds of the body or the spirit as a result of what they endured. They lie in our veterans' hospitals or struggle for recovery in rehabilitation centers. They suffer from post-traumatic stress and survivor's guilt. They yearn for peace in their soul. Dear God, we ask you to heal their wounds, to banish whatever inner demons may haunt them. Be their shield of strength, as promised in the ancient words of Joshua 1:9. This is my command: be strong and courageous. Never be afraid or discouraged, because I am your God, the Eternal One, and I will remain with you wherever you go. To this end, give them peace within, so they may return fully to their families and to society. We thank you again, O God, for all our country veterans, those of past generations and those who continue to earn this title today. May we never forget what our country has asked of them and what they have given in return. Help us to care enough to give them the respect and honor they are due and strengthen our resolve to build a world modeled on your realm where war will be pursued no more. This we ask in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, we pray, and we can all say, "Amen."
Thank you, Pastor Martinelli. Next, it is my privilege to introduce to you Scott Mindle. The 2019 and 2020 School Year begins, this is Scott's 27th year teaching in the West Bend School District. He currently teaches Global Studies and AP Human Geography. He is a co-advisor for the East National Honor Society, an assistant coach for the East Boys Track Program. He has served as the Social Studies Department Chair, a member of the superintendent's advisory team, a member of the high school building leadership team, and a member of the district's social studies curriculum committee. Scott's wife and himself have two sons, both of whom have graduated from West Bend East. With that, Scott Mindle.
First of all, I would like to begin by extending a heartfelt thank you to all of the veterans in the audience tonight for your service. I am truly honored and humbled by the sacrifices that you have made and are making for our country. I would also like to thank the committee for inviting me back once again this year to address you tonight. The theme selected for me this year to speak on was veterans giving back. Admittedly, I'm not the best person to speak on this topic since I'm not a veteran, nor am I native to West Bend or even Washington County. However, I think I can add one plus to that resume. However, I do belong to one of the service organizations connected to veterans in this area, the Sons of the American Legion, which actually is meeting right now, so I'm missing the meeting. Permit me to remind you, especially the non-veterans, how these individuals, all of our veterans through their various service organizations, continue to serve their country and their individual communities. Let me first begin with the American Legion. The American Legion was chartered by Congress in 1919 as a patriotic veterans' organization devoted to mutual helpfulness. It is the nation's largest wartime veteran service organization, committed to mentoring youth and sponsorship of wholesome programs in our communities, advocating patriotism and honor, promoting strong national security, and continued devotion to fellow service members and veterans. Also founded in 1919, the American Legion Auxiliary has nearly 1 million members from all walks of life. It's the world's largest women's patriotic service organization. The Auxiliary administers hundreds of volunteer programs, gives tens of thousands of hours to its communities and to veterans, and raises millions of dollars to support its own programs as well as other worthwhile charities familiar to all Americans. The American Legion offers academic, oratorical, and athletic scholarships to students each year, as well as sponsoring American Legion baseball, Badger Boys, Badger Girls state programs, which I was able to take part in when I was in high school, County Youth Government Day, blood donation programs, various children's and youth programs, the Reconnect program, shooting sports programs, and the Wisconsin American Legion Law Enforcement Career Academy, if that wasn't enough. It also provides services to active-duty service members, veteran services, and operates Camp American Legion. In West Bend, the Lieutenant Ray Dickup American Legion Post Number 36 was organized in August 1919 with 76 charter members. Post 36 was extremely active in its early days. According to an early historical record of the post, quote, "On August 20th, 1924, the value of the American Legion Post to West Bend was given wide publicity. The rain and electrical storm of August 4th, 5th, and 6th resulted in the Milwaukee River swelling to flood stages. Quick work on the part of the American Legion boys in West Bend saved the dam from going out. Fully 2,000 sandbags were necessary to prevent the raging waters from completely tearing out the ends of the dam. The businessmen and other residents felt a good deal more at ease as a result of the Legion's work." On November 16th, 1927, the Soldiers Memorial was dedicated to what is now the Old Courthouse Square. It is to the memory of those Washington County soldiers, sailors, Marines, and nurses who served during the Civil War, Spanish-American War, and World War I. American Legion Post 36 was instrumental in helping organize the dedication ceremony and the American Legion Auxiliary unveiled the monument. Over 10,000 people attended, the largest crowd to ever attend a ceremony in West Bend. On May 25th, 1930, the West Bend Airport was dedicated. Post 36 played a key role in the dedication of the airport. The first plane to land at the airport from out of town was a plane carrying Governor W.J. Kohler, which landed to collect American Legion and Auxiliary membership cards. And one final example of Legion Post 36 and their involvement in the building of West Bend is in the construction of St. Joseph's Hospital. Post 36 not only donated five acres of land for the building of the hospital, but was also instrumental in helping to raise the remaining funding for the hospital's construction. The 25-bed hospital opened its doors in July 1930. In September 1933, a stone used as a marker for the hospital site was donated by Post 36. Today, the Lieutenant Ray Dickup American Legion Post Number 36 continues to contribute to the community and continue the example set by their comrades over 100 years ago. The veterans of foreign wars of the United States trace their roots back to 1899, when the veterans of the Spanish-American War and the Philippine Insurrection founded local organizations in order to secure rights and benefits for their service. Today, membership stands at more than 1.6 million members of the VFW and its auxiliary. Their voice was instrumental in establishing the Veterans Administration, development of the National Cemetery System, in the fight for compensation for Vietnam vets exposed to Agent Orange, and for veterans diagnosed with Gulf War Syndrome, the passing of the GI Bill for the 21st century, and they continually fight for improved VA Medical Center services for women veterans. Besides helping fund the creation of the Vietnam-Korean War, World War II, and Women in Military Service Memorials, in 2005, the VFW became the first veterans' organization to contribute to the building of the new Disabled Veterans for Life Memorial, which opened in November 2010. And in 2015, the VFW became the first supporter of the National Desert Storm War Memorial, which is planned for construction on our nation's capital. Since its founding, the VFW has been a staple in the community. Troop support, youth activities, volunteering, and scholarship programs are only but a few of the ways that the VFW shines in the many communities and cities where posts are located. Examples of their involvement include youth scholarship programs such as the Voice of Democracy, Patriots Pen, Scout of the Year, and Teacher of the Year, as well as educational outreach through Echoes from the Wall and Veterans in the Classroom, as well as a variety of other programs to build good citizenship and exemplary character in America's youth. Additionally, they support active-duty troops through programs such as the Military Assistance Program, Adopt a Unit Program, One Student Veteran Program, as well as organizing and sending care packages of personal items to adopted units. The VFW Fred A. Schaefer Post Number 1393 was formed in West Bend in 1923. This post continues to support community efforts such as West Bend Loyalty Day Celebration and other local veterans and community events. It also happens to be the place where my wife surprised me with a 40th birthday party. The Korean War Veterans Association was formed in 1985. It was formed for seven main purposes, among those being to organize, promote, and maintain for benevolent and charitable purposes an association of persons who have seen honorable service during the Korean War at any time between June 25th, 1950, and January 31st, 1955, in order to promote the establishment of and to establish war and other memorials commemorative of any person or persons who served in the Korean War, and to aid needy association members and their wives and children, and the widows and children of persons who were members at the time of their death. This organization sponsors Revisit Korea Tours, the Tell America Program, and supports efforts to help resolve the fate of our Korean POWs and MIA's. The Corporal Richard A. Bell Chapter of the Korean War Veterans Association has been established here in West Bend. In 1979, an advocacy organization devoted exclusively to the needs of Vietnam veterans, initially known as the Council of Vietnam Veterans, began its work. Today, Vietnam Veterans of America has a national membership of over 85,000, with over 650 chapters throughout the United States, Puerto Rico, the Virgin Islands, Guam, and the Philippines. State councils coordinate the activities of local chapters. It places great emphasis on coordinating its national activities and programs with the work of its local chapters and state councils, and is organized to ensure that victories gained at the national level are implemented locally. The Vietnam Veterans of America strives for locally derived action to assist veterans and other needy members of their communities. These volunteer programs offer unique and innovative services to an ever widening population. They include support for homeless shelters, substance abuse education projects, crime prevention campaigns, sponsorship of youth sports, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and relief to other communities affected by natural disasters and chronic poverty. The Vietnam Veterans of America's goals are to promote and support the full range of issues important to Vietnam veterans, to create a new identity for this generation of veterans, and to change- and to change public opinion, public perception, of Vietnam veterans. Chapter 448 of the Vietnam Veterans of America is located in Newburgh, and West Bend is home to the Wisconsin State Council of the Vietnam Veterans of America. Founded in 1932, the Sons of the American Legion was created as an organization within the American Legion. The Sons of the American Legion is made up of boys and men of all ages whose parents or grandparents, like mine, served in the United States military and became eligible for membership in the American Legion. Together, members of the American Legion, the American Legion Auxiliary, and the Sons of the American Legion make up what is known as the Legion Family. All three organizations place high importance on preserving our American traditions and values, improving the quality of life for our nation's children, caring for veterans and their families, and perhaps most importantly, teaching the fundamentals of good citizenship, something that I try to do every day inside this building. Sons support the American Legion in promoting a wide variety of programs, assisting their posts in activities such as veterans programs, volunteerism, children and youth projects, and fundraising. Squadron 36, of which I am a member, is a newly-formed squadron within the Sons of the American Legion. Through some research, I found that there was actually an original squadron formed here way back in April of 1935. The American Legion Riders was started in Michigan in 1993 based on the idea of starting an organization within the American Legion for motorcycle enthusiasts. American Legion Rider chapters are well-known for their charitable work, which have raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for local children's hospitals, schools, veterans homes, severely wounded service members, and other scholarships. Currently, over 110,000 American Legion Riders meet in over 2,000 chapters in every domestic department and at least three foreign countries. Riders in all states have escorted military units returning home from combat tours overseas, conducted massive cross-country fundraising events for wounded warriors from all the services, have raised millions of dollars for countless local, state, and national charities. Many riders support local memorial ceremonies and parades, support the American Legion in their local communities, raise money for VA hospitals, schools, and youth centers, and participate in Rolling Thunder, the annual POW/MIA rally in Washington, DC on Memorial Day weekend. Many riders also conduct annual statewide legacy runs in direct support of American Legion scholarship programs and in supporting wounded service members across the nation. The American Legion Riders Association of Wisconsin was formed and chartered in August of 2000. District 2 of the Legion Riders includes Washington, Ozaki, Dodge, Sheboygan, Jefferson, and Columbia Counties. A few more notable rides of the recent past that the organization was participating in is a new mission of raising money for Camp American Legion, a quiet getaway in Wisconsin's North Country for a Wisconsin veteran to have some recuperative time to aid in their recovery from an operation, an illness, a breakdown, or other affliction. The Riders of Wisconsin have made this an annual benefit ride in order to help support this cause. Also every year, the Legion Riders of Wisconsin participates in the America's Freedom Rally Ride for the Armed Forces. This ride takes place in Milwaukee, starting at the Harley-Davidson Plant. Hundreds of motorcycles have participated in this ceremonial event commemorating those that protect this great nation. These are just a few of the ways that veterans continue to serve their country and their individual communities in which they live. Admittedly, I may have left out many other examples. However, the bottom line is that many veterans never end their service to our country and to their communities. It just takes on a different form, and we should all be grateful for that. Finally, on behalf of all the students, faculty, and staff members of the West Bend School District, I would once again like to offer my thanks to all veterans of all generations for their tremendous sacrifice of service to our nation. Some of you may know that I began collecting names of former West Bend High School students and staff members who are military veterans. By Veterans Day four years ago, 2015, I had collected about 225 names. I thought I had bitten off a big chunk. That list currently stands at over 1,870 names, including the names from the graduating class of 1897 all the way to the class of 2019. If you're counting, I wasn't a math major, but if you're counting, that's over 120 years of veteran service that this building has seen. Those names, along with photos of the veterans, have been made into a film, and that film plays continuously during the school day in the main hallway, right down the hall of the high schools, in order for our students to recognize and honor the service of our own hometown veterans. I invite you to join me after the ceremony for a special showing of the film in the East Cafeteria. Finally, thank you and God bless.
Thanks Scott for all that information. It's really amazing what you can come up with every year for us. We appreciate it. Next person I'd like to introduce is our keynote speaker this evening. A little bit about him, John Klimos. Served in the US Army from 1966 to 1969. In May of 1967, he was stationed in the central highlands of Vietnam, where he was assigned to the 704th Maintenance Battalion of the 4th Infantry Division. In February of 1968, during the Tet Offensive, he was wounded having sustained shrapnel in the face and chest. On returning home in May of 1968, he was assigned to the Combat Development Command at Fort Ord in California, where he spent the next 18 months. That is where he met his future wife, Donna Johnson, who is also an Army veteran. And if my math is right, they just celebrated their 50th anniversary two months ago. Congratulations. After their service, they settled in Wisconsin and started their family. John joined the VFW in 2002, and in 2009, he was elected commander of the VFW Post 1393 in West Bend. In our community, he serves on the Committee for the West Bend Memorial Day Parade and for Military Day at the Washington County Fair. John has a passion to reach the youth in our community. With the VFW post in West Bend, he is actively involved with the Cub Scout Pack, a Little League team, and a group of young people called the Young Patriots of Washington County. It is this group that has entertained veterans throughout the state, performing in parades, doing USO shows, and welcoming home the veterans on Stars and Stripes Honor Flights. In addition, John travels to numerous schools throughout the state, speaking to students as the VFW State of Wisconsin Chairman for the Patriots' Pen and for the Voice of Democracy Scholarship Programs. He is an advocate for the Student Veterans of America and is involved with the students at UWWC and MPTC. It is my privilege to introduce to you our keynote speaker, John Klimos.
Thank you. So, members of the council, Bernie and the members of the common-sense citizens of Washington County, and family and friends, and especially to our distinguished guests that are here this evening, our veterans. It truly is another honor for me to be here again, to speak to you. You know, there are certain days or events that occur in one's lifetime that really stand out, events that you tend to remember for a long time. Tonight's event has literally become one of those traditions that I look forward to every year. In years past, we've honored the World War II, Korea, Vietnam, all the generations. We've honored the women veterans, different branches. But tonight, we're here to honor all of our veterans. And I'm not going to talk tonight about statistics, or how or when Veterans Day started, but instead, tonight I want to talk to you about what Veterans Day means to me. To me. My story. Many of you, I'm sure, will agree with some of these things, and some of you may not. That's okay. But it's my story, my personal story, my story about this, my community. I have to change here. It says, "Mr. Mayor," I have to change it. "Mr. Sedanico," can I call you Greg? Members of the common-sense citizens years ago, I want to personally thank you for starting this tradition of recognizing veterans at one of your regular common council meetings, sir, back in 2011. It happened to be the 70th anniversary of the bombing of Pearl Harbor. And this tradition was started then when you wanted to recognize and honor our World War II veterans. That event was scheduled for November 7th, 2011. You invited all World War II veterans to come to City Hall and to be on the agenda for your common council meeting. Do you remember that night? I do. You were not sure what to expect, not sure who or how many would be able to come. I remember that night. That council room was full. It was overflowing. It was standing room only, and I shouldn't say too much because the fire department's here. But it was full. What an honor it was when you asked me to be the speaker for that evening. That night, in that room, we had those there that were on Pearl Harbor the day it was bombed. That was Jerry Jerome. We had those who were involved with the D-Day invasion. That was Steve Sapowicz. We had those who were crew members on B-17 bombers. Dean Benzer. We had those who served in the South Pacific. Al Meyer was there. Some of those have passed on. Some of those are no longer with us. But what an honor. We had heroes right here in West Bend, in that city council room that night. And we still have some that are still with us. We've got Alan Kekefer, I don't know if he's here tonight. Served in the South Pacific. Joe Zadra served during the Battle of the Bulge. They're still with us. We had heroes in our community that evening. I think it would be fitting at this time for all of our World War II veterans, if you're in the audience, just kind of raise your hand. Let us recognize or stand up if you can. Where's our World War II veterans? Do we have any here? All right. We've lost a few. We've done a number of funerals for them. Have you ever been in a situation where you were given a task or an assignment? And it was one of those things that was difficult to do, difficult to complete. But in the course of time, you completed that task. In fact, you met all of the expectations and you exceeded what your goal was. You've done your job, and you've done it very well. But you got no recognition. There was no praise for a job well done. And then even after that, someone else basically accomplished that same thing, that same difficult assignment, and that person, that group received all of the praise. They received all the recognition. Have you ever experienced anything like that? I believe that describes our Korean War veterans. They did their job. They were given an assignment, and they did an outstanding job, but there was no recognition. They call it the Forgotten War. In 2012, the city, at their veterans tribute, continued and wanted to honor the Korean War veterans. That evening was scheduled for November 4th, 2012. Because of the overwhelming support the previous year, that event was moved to the Badgers Middle School Cafeteria. Remember that evening? The Korean War vets, the heroes that we had there in our community? It was another tremendous turnout, another overflowing crowd to honor our veterans. And again, you asked me to speak to our heroes. We had those Korean War veterans who were seriously wounded, received Purple Hearts that were there. One was Don Carterelli. We had those there that lost fingers or toes because of the freezing cold that they suffered in Korea. Heroes from our community were there that evening. Some are gone. Some are not with us. But some are here. I see Merlin out there, Merlin Stocker. I see Norby out there. I see other Korean War veterans. So, can we have our Korean War vets stand up? Let us recognize our Korean War veterans. Guys, I salute you. Six years ago, November 2013, right here in this auditorium, right here in this high school, we recognized the Vietnam veterans. There's no need for me to remind you tonight on the way the Vietnam veterans were treated when we returned home, the lies that were told about us, the disrespect that we had to endure. It's not a mystery why we remained silent for so many years. It's not that we were ashamed of our military service. For the most part, we remained very patriotic. Most of us just blended into our communities as good citizens. The fact of the matter is, it wasn't worth it for us to broadcast anything to anyone about our military service. You never knew that we were veterans. We worked with you on the job. We went to church with you. We sat next to you. We came to events. We were your neighbors, but we never talked about it. Over the course of time, events like this, LZ Lambo, helped the Vietnam veteran to heal and get over some of those feelings of bitterness that we felt. Now, I realize that there's some who still will not accept the thank you that we get. They will not accept the fact that people are changing now. Many of them will say something like, "Too little, too late. I don't want to get involved." And you know what? I was that same way. I understand that there's still some individuals, there are still some communities that do not support veterans. In my job through the VFW, I get a chance to travel the state, speak to different schools, talk to different school districts. There are some communities that wouldn't hold an event like this, not at least publicly. One of the programs that Scott was talking about, the Voice of Democracy. Every year, we have a theme. High school students can win up to $30,000 in the Voice of Democracy contest. Middle school students can win up to $5,000 in a scholarship. Each year, there's a theme for the essay contest. This year, the theme was, "What Makes America Great?" And I've had several schools, several areas call me and says, "John, there's four schools that are not doing the essay this year in our area." Had another one today, said, "Teachers aren't letting the kids do that." I realize there's other communities who are not veteran-friendly, but I want to tell you that this community is real. They still support veterans. They still support veterans. To some of those veterans that say it's too little, too late, let me say this. This community is real. It's not phony. They mean it. I've seen it. I've experienced it. At this point in time, at this point in history, at this moment, at this particular event, plus, in my case, the last 20 years, this community has supported and encouraged and helped me and my wife for my Vietnam brothers and sisters. Can you stand? And let's be recognized by a community that cares for us. So our Vietnam vets, I know you're out there. Where are you? Come on, Bob, stand up. John, stand up. I never tire of saying it, and I know you never tire of hearing it, but welcome home, brothers. Greg and Bernie, you've continued scheduling this event every year. The city has honored veterans that have served between 1975 and 1990 after Vietnam. We, we kind of call those the in-betweeners. I don't know. Do we have anybody, any of the veterans that served between 1975 and 1990? Do we have anybody out there? There we go, down here. Stand up, stand up. Julie. Thank you. Then after that, we had Desert Storm. Iraqi Freedom, Enduring Freedom. This is the younger guys, from 1990 to 2000. Do we have any of those veterans that are out there? There we go. And who can, who can forget what happened on 9/11? In the year 2016, the city's veteran tribute honored those young, those brave men and women who fought in what is now known as the War on Terrorism. They served in Iraq and Afghanistan. If you were there that evening, many of you were, you must remember that the keynote speaker that night was Sergeant Glenn McKinney. Remember Sergeant McKinney? What a guy. He was the main speaker. And this, this young soldier, by the way, he's still on active duty. He gave a speech that was second to none. He shared with me some of his thoughts and some of the paragraphs of his speech before he gave that speech. He showed me what he had prepared. And that evening, he started to read his speech. But after a few seconds, he kind of folded that speech, set it off to the side, and he talked for the next 20 minutes, straight from his heart. He said what it meant for him to join the Army after 9/11 and that he was determined to do his part. I'll tell you, that, that speech was so fantastic, so emotional, that I know I and others had tears. We had chills up and down our spine. Sergeant McKinney, a true young soldier and a true American patriot. There's some of us here that still stay in contact with Sergeant McKinney. And there's indications that he might come back to West Bend after he retires because of our community. He loved it here. So do we have any veterans that were here during 9/11 or served during 9/11, Iraq and Afghanistan? Any of our younger veterans? There we go, right down here. Josh. The years kept going on, more tributes, more veteran tributes from the city. And two years ago, the veteran tribute was for our lady veterans. Speaker that year, do you remember who the speaker was that year? Reverend Clarissa Martinelli. I'll tell you, you, many know her as the Fifth Avenue Methodist Church, but she's also a Navy veteran and a Gold Star Mother. You don't know what you're missing if you have not heard her give one of her speeches. She is so full of energy. She's an inspiration. And we just love her when she's involved with our events. Thank you, ma'am. But at this time, I'd like to have all of our lady veterans stand. I'm going to have my wife join me now. My goal tonight, I wanted to demonstrate what Veterans Day means to me. Our city, our community really, truly supports veterans. So does our county. Our county clerk, our county Veteran Service Officer, Kurt Rush, a young Marine that's doing an outstanding job for veterans as he helps them with their claims. And I, I challenge anyone that's a veteran here that has not seen Kurt yet, just to talk to him, get registered with him. Benefits are changing all the time, and it's a good person to stay in contact with. Our West Bend schools also support our veterans. I'm going to give a shout out to Mr. Roll from Silverbrook and Mr. Allman from Badger. They constantly invite us to come and speak to the classes and be at school. Teachers, Mr. Spath and Mr. Chamberlain from Badger have been such an encouragement to us personally over the years. Mr. Hall from the high school here, and of course, I've got to give a great shout out to Mr. Scott Mindle. This man has done more for our veterans here in this community than I can think of. He has just done such a job. And we at the VFW have nominated him for Teacher of the Year in the state of Wisconsin. And if he goes on from there, he'll, he'll compete against the National Teacher of the Year for high school. Our police department, I love those guys. Chief, where are you at, chief? When we had our Loyalty Day program three years ago, the state of Wisconsin and the VFW always asks a city in the state to host a Loyalty Day program. And I know what was involved with that. And when they approached me, I said, "Oh, no. I don't, I can't handle that." So we met with the mayor and we met with the chief. We laid out what was all involved. And I'm sitting back, "I can't do this." And chief says, "We can do it." Mayor says, "We can do it. Let's get behind it." He asked me, "What's, what, what is the parade route you're planning?" And I said, "Well, maybe if we just go from like the high school down to the VFW, and that's only about two blocks or something." Chief says, "No. Why don't you do the same route that you do for the Fourth of July from, from Badger all the way to Regner Park?" And I said, "But chief, we got to cross a state highway and you'd, I'd have to get permits." He said, "Don't worry about it." The mayor said, "We can do it." The Parks Department got involved. Everybody got involved, the, the Boy Scouts, everybody. It was such a community event. The headline in the West, the VFW news that year was Loyalty Day, a fantastic, a great success. And it's all because of our community. And I got to give a shout out to our police department, Lieutenant Rollinger, the color guard. Are you sure they're not veterans? We can certainly use you in our color guard. But thank you, sir. And I can't forget to thank Victoria, Victoria Lewis. Are, are you sure you're not a first sergeant or a drill sergeant? You get things done. Am I not right? Gee? You always have that attitude. "We can do it. We can do it. It's not impossible." And you remember, I was such a rector in that Loyalty Day. You were, "We can do it." You pushed me. You've encouraged me. You may never know how much I appreciate. Thank you. You know, you, you, many of you know I'm a member of the VFW, but there's another group, another organization that I'm most proud to be a member of. There's another group of veterans, and some of them are here tonight. We call ourselves the West Bend Veterans Honor Guard. We have about 20 members, and it is our honor to participate in the military funerals in this area. We also participate in parades, flag ceremonies, opening ceremonies, school visits. The only difference with our group is we're not chartered by Congress, so we can do whatever we want to do. We're made up of the VFW, the American Legion, the Korean War veterans, the Vietnam veterans, and disabled American veterans. And we're a proud group. We've been busy this week. We were at the high school. We were at the concert, concert. We're, we're here tonight. We got more visits this week, but it's a proud group. And I want, the members of our West Bend Veterans Color Guard, standing up. Give them a hand. Where, come on, I know you guys are here. John, Merlin, Nick, Norby, Joel, Lee, Russ, Jim, Jim back there. Thank you, guys. It's been an honor working with you. To the members of the city council, can I challenge you on something? The city will be electing a new mayor in a few months. Now, I, I know some of you personally. I've met probably most of you. Don't know you that well, but I know some of you. There's even one of you that I did not vote for. My vote can be purchased. But let me, please do your best to encourage the new administration, the new mayor, to continue to have this event each and every year. Let's keep this going for, for as long as we're around. Let me encourage you to do that. Please do that for us. This is what Veteran Day means to me and my wife. If you would allow me, one last item before I close. Even though we have a great community here, and we love it here, there are some things that I need to kind of get off my chest. As I mentioned, we're involved, our West Bend Veterans Color Guard is involved in so many different activities, which include opening flag ceremonies, parades. And it's exciting to walk down the street in a parade and, and having people stand and clap for you. It's great to see when you're coming in an auditorium, people stand and salute when we're singing the National Anthem. But I cannot understand why or how some folks still seem to think it's all right not to respect the flag. We've seen it happen at funerals where, we've seen it at schools, we've seen it at opening ceremonies, at funerals. While we're doing a solemn process of folding the flag, there are people out there standing outside of a funeral home, drinking and smoking. One time, they came and just, while they're folding a flag, just putting out their cigarette and one of those things. We see it in classrooms where kids just lay there. I've heard it said by some that this flag is nothing but a piece of cloth with some colored threads in them. This flag. Can I tell you a personal story? I talked about all the heroes that I've got to know here in this community. Our World War II guys, Korea, Vietnam. Our brave men and women, Iraq, Afghanistan. But I lived for 40 years with a hero and I never knew it. My dad served in World War II, Army Air Corps from 1939 to 1945. Passed away some 20 years ago. He, he, the service ribbon was the African-European Theater. Six Bronze Service Stars, three Air Medals. He never talked about it. I, I don't know how many men he's seen not come back, how many men, friends died. I never remember him hugging me. I never remember him saying, "I love you." Before he passed away, I remember one time I said, "Dad, I love you," and he said, "Why?" I, I say that not to say that he was a bad person, because every day I was in Vietnam, my dad wrote me a letter. He got me involved with scouts when I was younger. He helped me to learn how to play baseball, but he didn't show that closeness. What he went through, I do not know. But looking at his service record, I can only imagine what he went through. And yet, every day in Vietnam, he made sure I got a letter. That's a good dad. Don't tell me that this is a piece of cloth that's got red and white stripes and blue. This flag means something. And I know it means to you. My fellow veterans, we fought for a person's freedom of speech. But let me remind you, we fought for our freedom of speech as well. There is people out there who want to shut us up, but we fought for our right for freedom of speech. And this community has let us do that. We need to shout. We can't be silent anymore. We've got to speak up. We've got to say, "No, dishonoring the flag, that's wrong." We need to teach our kids that. And for the most part, this community does. But I see a little bit of slipping in. We need to be on guard. City officials, help us with that. Thank you again for this, Greg, Bernie, city. Thank you for allowing me to speak again to you tonight from my heart. Thank you.
John, thank you very much for those truly inspirational words. And I think I can speak for every member of this council that we'll do everything we can to keep this going. Next person I'd like to introduce is Joel Hausmann, who will honor us with his rendition of "God Bless America."
It's pretty hard to follow what John just did, but I'll do my best in encouraging everyone to sing "God Bless America." But I want to just bring up one tidbit of information. This is- But I want to just bring up one tidbit of information, this is service-related. I was blessed on May 11th of this year to go on a Stars and Stripes Honor Flight. It's a day I'll always remember. And I want to mention, someone in our common council is going this Saturday on a Stars and Stripes Honor Flight. It's a very good friend of mine, John Butchlick. So now, if you can, join me in singing "God Bless America." God bless America, and that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
Thank you, Joel, and as always, fantastic job. In closing, I would just like to say thank you to Common City Citizens of Washington County for organizing tonight's tribute. I would also like to take a minute to acknowledge the veterans on the West Bend Common Council. District 1 Alderman, John Butchlick, District 2 Alderman, Mark Allen, and District 8 Alderman, Roger Kist. Thank you all for your service. Tonight, we pay tribute to the veterans who gave of themselves to make sure we could enjoy the continuing freedoms that we have today. To each and every veteran, I want to say thank you for your service on behalf of myself and the entire Common Council of the city of West Bend. I also want to say a special thank you to the families of those veterans who stayed behind, holding down the home fort while their loved ones were serving to protect our freedoms. A reminder, Monday 11th, on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, we will again gather at 10:45 in the morning at Veterans Plaza, the north corner of 5th Avenue and Poplar Street in the city of West Bend. Then 55, there will be a brief statement will be read, followed by a moment of silence. 11 o'clock, the Simon Will Sound, and the West Bend Veterans Color Guard will fire the traditional three-round volley, followed by the playing of taps. I encourage each and every person that is able to make it, please do so to honor our heroes. And in closing, I'd like to say thank you to everyone that came out tonight, thank you to our veterans, and everybody is invited to the East Cafeteria to enjoy the West Bend High School tribute video and refreshments. And thank you for coming tonight, and with that, I say goodnight.